Good afternoon. It is now 6:01, June 18, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city's housing assets successor. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening, everyone.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here. We will have the invocation delivered by Father Jude of St. John of Our Catholic Church and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. So please stand.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray. God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your blessing on this City Council meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. May God bless us all. Amen.
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. Therefore, can we have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda?
The Victorville City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, any item on this agenda that might be a conflict of interest to any council member, board member should be identified at this time. Do we have anyone?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. On item D2, I reside in the Community Facilities District on the agenda. So at that time, I'll request to be excused and then return once discussion and action has completed.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No? We do not have any appeal hearings. Therefore, we move on to public hearings. Public hearing, B1. A public hearing on assessment ballot proceedings ordering the annexation of track 14499 to Victorville Citywide 2 Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 6. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct the public hearing on the assessment ballot proceedings for the changes of organization and assessments for track number 14499, instruct the city clerk to count the ballots, determine if a majority protest exists, and if no majority protest exists, adopt number, or adopt resolution number 19-016.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask council members if they have any questions of staff. And if they do, it's a two-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones. Do you have any?
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cox? Ms. Gomez?
Yes, for staff. Section 2 states hearing and determination that no majority protest exists. I'm presuming because this is going to pass with a majority. This is just a clause, basically, that's probably just entrenched in these, in this document. But of course, I'm just surmising, so would you please explain?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, in the staff report, the staff report contains no presumption of what's going to occur in the ballots that are, have been received and will be counted once recess. This item was initiated originally by property owners in a tract located off of Ridgecrest Drive in Victorville. And effectively, property owners in that area, more than a majority of the existing property owners, actually petitioned the city to consider being deannexed from their existing Landscape Maintenance Assessment District and then annexed into a different district. The difference being that the current district that they're located in has a collection mechanism that's not sufficient to provide adequate, or at least sufficient, level of services comparable to their neighboring districts. So the appeal from the property owners has been to annex from one to the other, the other being one that collects enough money to actually allow for a sufficient level of services. So with that petition that's been initiated, this process has been started to where there's actual protest ballot that's been mailed to the property owners. The process that we're going through tonight is to actually administer the ballots, open the ballots, read the ballots, and then decide the will of the voters.
Right, Keith, I just wanted the response to Section 2, hearing and determination that no majority protest exists. I've read the processes, but I just didn't understand this particular clause. And that's what I was seeking explanation for, but I'm going to assume that you've covered it there. My next question is, if you look on page 25, there's 37 and 67 cents. Numbers per parcel. I'm assuming that this is part of the 144, the 182 for the first year. I'm not sure. The next one is on the following page where the maintenance assessments are to be levied according to benefit rather than the assessed values. And if you looked at the assessed values on page 27, the total differs from another assessed value. So I was wondering, what is the assessed value that we're looking at? And if they're just two different ways of calculating the assessments as a whole for all 60 units? Or if they're being partitioned?
No, the assessment values are consistent. I think what you're alluding to on page seven of, I'm sorry, it's page 27 of the agenda. I think what you're looking at is that applied over the number of units in that district to identify how much money can be raised to help establish the level of service for that district.
Okay, so then if you look on page 35, there is the total proposed assessment amount for the entire annexed track for the year is $10,000. So you compare that with the total of almost a little bit over $800,000. That's what I was looking at. I wasn't sure what they meant.
The $800,000 is for the entire LMAD 6 area. So it's quite a few parcels. If you look down the list there, you'll see the total number of units totaling 6,074.
And so what is on the amount of proposed assessment mean for $10,000 then?
That's just this track. It's a yearly amount.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That is just for the tracking question tonight. It's a yearly amount for 60 homes.
What I hear is for 60 units, it's $800,000, and for 60 units, it's $10,000.
No, for the entire assessment district is the $800,000. Going back to page 27, if you look at the number of units, the number of units described in the table at the very bottom is certainly describing more units than the 60 that are being discussed in this ballot item.
Okay, so will these figures allow for a reserve fund for LMAD 6? Yes or no? Do we anticipate?
Yes. Yes.
We do anticipate reserve funds for LMAD 6?
Yes, we try and keep a reserve as we only get the revenues twice a year. So we have to make sure we can, you know, be able to fund our activities during those gaps between revenues.
So does that mean that when we charge at cost, we elevate a certain percentage for there to be a reserve fund to be able to?
Your time is up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And at this time, I request a 15-minute recess to provide time for the city clerk to count the ballots in Conference Room D. So we will take a 15-minute recess. We will reconvene at 6:28. It is now 6:26, and we reconvene our meeting. And at this time, I make a request for the city clerk to declare the results of the count and/or not a majority protest exist.
We received 22 in support and 7 opposed, which means the majority protest does not exist.
Thank you. Then I need a motion in a second to approve the resolution number 19-016. So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes. If I may. With the passage of resolution 19-016, the City of Victorville will have adopted and levied collections of assessment for the first year of $182.70, and every subsequent year thereafter, $144.70 sets with no sunset or no deadline or determination of date infinitely to be seen for 60 units of these property owners who will see this tax bill from track number 14499 to LMAD 1 for the fiscal year.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
May I say that this was at the request of the property owners? Exactly. Thank you.
As a point of order, Madam, you're out of order. You had a question comment section where you could have done that after the vote, before the vote.
We now move on to consent calendar. And at this time, I pull item C7 for discussion. We have items C1 through C7. And any item may be pulled for discussion by any council member.
I'm going to request to comment and question on items C1 through C4, including item C6.
I'm sorry, that was what?
Items, consent calendar C1 through C4, including item C6.
Does Madam Mayor invite a motion? So I move that the council take action in accordance, excuse me, the council and the Board of Directors, Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendation on item C5 and pull for separate consideration all of the remaining issues. Second. Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Would you please repeat the timing? Was it three minutes?
For your questions?
For, yeah, for consent calendar.
Two minutes for questions.
Thank you. So for item C1, I've noticed that we have the May 14th, the May 21st, and the June 4th items all coming in one hit. When Ms. Carol Lee Bates was here, we never had more than even two items come to the floor. And I'm not understanding why all of a sudden, either it's impacting, there's a slow process. I'm not sure what it is. Memos weren't, memos didn't go out to the city council. So I'm concerned that now we're establishing a pattern of three or more items that have to be approved in one hit versus beforehand. Like I said, it was one, no more than two. The second item for item C2, the electronic filing and campaign statements and statements for electronic interests. For this one, I was wanting to see if we could adopt ordinance 2390 and 2391, which is the use of online or electronic filing of campaign statements for economic interests. But I'm assuming because it's in the consent calendar automatically when we have the majority, we're going to have that moved and adopted. For item C3, the completion of the Phantom West, I read that we had nine different street lighting. I wasn't sure if that was a street lighting project. I think it was $25,000. There was no backing, or I just don't remember reading where the $25 was coming from. If it's from the street lighting budget, if you can confirm that. I'm not remembering. There was a lot of material there. And for C4, Vemis Operating Results Quarter 3 Fiscal Year 2019, there's a couple of things that are in the demand schedule with a couple of items that are over $20,000. I know we're not breaking even with Vemis, and I'd like to hear an explanation for that. And same with the commercial demand. I'll be giving the city clerk questions that I have that are underlying that I hope to get back in my inbox because I don't have enough time to ask them all right here. So I'll be handing that to the clerk at this moment.
I do have one card for item C7. Ramiro Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. I kept reading over and over the 126 pages of this transition from the fire department. And it just, I kept just asking myself, everything that's documented, who's going to be liable for all the damages to the equipment that's being handed over to the City of Victorville? I know they even documented that he took out the batteries, left the clocks at 3:25. I don't know why somebody would poach something on that and report or scribble with lighter fluid, the initials on the grass. A lot of the equipment is missing, misplaced, mislabeled, not working. So my understanding is the City of Victorville is kidding. All the equipment now passed over from the County of San Bernardino, is that correct? And why is all that damage documented? And the damage, it's going to be assessed and the payment. Is the county of San Bernardino supposed to be liable for that payment of all the mismanagement of the equipment, the ladders, the misuse of the vehicles? We are supposed to be saving money by transitioning to our own fire department? And it seems right now we also garnished a big old bill to fix the equipment. This was done back in March 19th of this year. And as the list goes on and on and on, is somebody liable for this? Or is the city just going to accept the loss and just add it to the budget that the taxpayers are going to pay? That's my question. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had.
Motion? No, we need, you, C7?
C7, yeah.
So I did have just one comment. Is it related to item C2? And then I'm presuming we're going to hear more about item C7?
Yes.
Okay. So on item C2, I am working under the understanding on that that the reason that this appeared on the consent agenda is that it's effectively the second reading of the ordinances. And typically, second readings can appear on the consent agenda. Is my understanding correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have a question on procedure, Madam Mayor. My understanding is C7 is pulled for a separate discussion. And once we vote on this, it won't include C7?
That's correct. You could actually entertain a moment, a motion at this time to vote on items C1, C2, C3, C4, and C6. You've already voted on C5. So if you had a motion, that would take care of those items and then you can have a separate discussion on item C7.
Okay, so a point of order for clarification. When did we approve already vote C5? When would, when did we take C7? I could have been busy trying to take my notes, if you remind me.
Sure, may I, Madam Mayor? So in my original motion, we pulled all of the items with the exception of C5. And on C5, it was when we voted on the pooling of the other ones for separate consideration, we also approved item C5. And so then now the discussion that remains is all of the items that have been pulled. And now we're talking about having a discussion on all of those that have been pulled with the, excuse me, entertaining a motion on all of those that have been pulled with the exception of C7 and have that as an additional motion so that we can have a fuller discussion on that item. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox to approve C1 through C6. Is there a second? With the exception of C5. Right, that was already approved. Yes, yes. Second.
Well, I'm going to make a subordinate motion because I'm not agreeing with C6. So I'm not going to do one full motion when I don't agree with a specific item. So I would move to approve items C1 through C4 with one motion as recommended by staff.
Is there a second? I'm happy to do that. The other way to do that, of course, is just to register that you're going to vote no on that particular item. And then when the rest of the council, so that when you do vote yes, presuming you do on the remaining issues, then it's already registered that you're voting, you're registering your vote on C6 as a no. So we don't have to do additional motions, if that makes sense.
Well, as long as C6 is a no registry for me, everything else from C1, C6, C4 is a yes. But if we're going to combine them, then it's a no for all of them.
Yeah, it's in the policy manual that you can register a no vote on an item on the consent agenda.
Even with one motion?
That's correct.
Yes.
So if you, if you want the record to reflect your voting no on C6, just, the city clerk, indicate that to the city clerk.
Okay.
So then you can vote, and your vote will not be counted as a yes vote on C6.
I do have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to approve C1, C2, C3, C4, C6. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Make sure that my C6 is reflected as a no.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no on item C6. Is there any other discussion on C7?
I would like, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have a discussion on C7. We have a report here from the.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, item C7 was accidentally placed on the consent calendar when it was actually originally intended to be on the written calendar. In fact, the staff item itself was labeled written. So with that, staff did plan on providing a brief overview as to what's contained in this report. And I'll eventually hand it over to Chief Benson to go into the better details. But similar to what we shared with you when we transitioned around this time last year, I believe it was June, July 7th or 8th-ish, we transitioned Station 319 away from the county fire contract and actually had the services taken over by Mission Aviation. One of the things that we did at that time was we shared with you basically a condition assessment so that you knew what we inherited at the break date. So that there was a clean break between county fire and Victorville. We wanted to share with you what we learned about the conditions of not only the facilities, but the apparatus. And we felt that that was important to you because when we first entered into the contract with county fire 10 years ago, with that contract for services, we did provide to them the facilities, the fire stations, and of course, the equipment and apparatus. So we also paid for the maintenance of those particular items. So one of the things that we wanted to do as a part of the transition effort is share with you with full disclosure how we were getting the facilities and the apparatus back so that we had a clear sense of the condition. That way, if there were things that needed to be fixed or replaced, it was clear as to where the responsibility may have existed when we got the equipment and the facilities back. So following, in accord with the transition report that we shared with you last year, now that we've completed the transition, March 30, and been able to go through all of the facilities, this report was compiled really to share with you where we're at in terms of what we got back from county fire. And certainly, we wanted you to be aware, at least from our perspective, the view of getting the fire service back. Certainly, our view at this point, given the assessment of the conditions of all facilities and apparatus, that while the decision of the council was made in January of 2018, largely based upon a financial decision, certainly, there is a question now as we've gone through and assessed all of the facilities and the operations. And we certainly believe that the decision made in large part was, while it was financial, I think certainly what we've learned is that operational as well, you can expect things to be different and better. There's certainly some alluding to in the report that we paid for services that probably weren't rendered when you look at some of the basic conditions of how we received apparatus and facilities back. So I think that's the general preamble. I think the most important thing was this is effectively your document as to the break between us and county fire. We're certainly going forward. We've learned a lot from what we've gotten handed off to us. And we certainly will build upon what we've got in this report as fire service continues under the Victorville name. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Benson, and he can offer some additional comments.
Madam Mayor and council, to add on to what the city manager has explained, in addition to the apparatus, the fire trucks, the ladder truck, the equipment, which is the tools that are used, the medical equipment, also the facilities. But in addition, this also covers areas of the Fire Prevention Bureau and how that was also being run by county fire within the city. So this is a basic summary of our findings from the transition that when we did the transition, crews were very careful to document. And then since then, we've also continued to document our findings because like many things, they're mechanical. In fact, today, I just received a, an invoice for work that had to be completed on a, one of the engines, medic engine 312. So we're careful to document all of the condition and then the actions that we had to take to correct those conditions.
Jim, did you have something?
I have a question to the chief and/or the city manager. Notice that this is a status report. There are questionable damages such as the water. There are questionable damages such as the water way to prove that it was done on purpose. I don't want to go into all the details. But I'd certainly like to refer this report to the city manager and the city attorney. Recommendation as to whether or not we accept this as children at play. Copy of it to our supervisor, who also represents this area and the citizens of the city. See if bear this kind of activities. I don't know how many contracts have come back to cities from the county. I'm assuming that boys were at play and using grass killer and maybe losing his crew. But you know, these, these can be hazardous to the health of the firefighters that are there to have mold created, which looks like it was done purposely, but we don't know that. So, rather than speculate, I'd rather refer this to our city manager, the city attorney, and request the city manager, our chief, to be included, to look at this, make a recommendation to the council. Expectation of the city manager, receive and file or any action with the council?
Right now, it's, it's the position of the city manager that this be a receive and file. Certainly, and, and just to add, this is a report that actually has been shared today, in fact, with the supervisor. And we've shared it largely because I think our view is, over the course of 10 years, we as a city have effectively relied upon the contract and relied upon their leadership to manage the, the fire service. And I think our approach, at least my assessment, has been that our approach over the fire service has been hands-off because of the contractual relationship with County Fire to provide effectively the highest professional level of service. I think what we're effectively attempting to tell you here is that certainly no reflection of the actual men and women that actually labor in the vineyards and provide the essential fire service. I think really what you have here is a management and leadership issue. And the reason why we shared it with, with the county supervisor is because certainly we believe, given what we've learned in this report, and especially as they're going through the process right now of trying to find a new leader to run their, their department, it might be worthwhile. I know if I was in their position of leadership, I'd want to know if there are issues that need to be looked at in my department to where perhaps there needs to be a change in how we do business and/or a change in culture. That's in part the motivation for which we, which, why we shared it with the county supervisor. So, at the end of the day, it's our view that regardless of what has happened in the past, our, our goal is to provide the best public safety irrespective of jurisdictional boundaries. So, with that, that view, my position has been, let's share it with this council so we know what we had. But certainly, going forward, I want you to know that it's our position that this is not what you're going to expect going forward. You're going to definitely expect a higher level of professional service from, from the leadership that runs your fire department.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, but then that, that raises the question. It's, it's just really alarming and disappointing to, to learn that before transition to our own fire department, that we were not in tip-top shape. And that our residents, you know, required us to have a very well-organized and well-ordered public safety. And to everyone's concern, we didn't have that. And I, I guess my question is, though we receive and file this, are, we're, we're not going to experience the savings that we anticipated? When we move, when we transition to our own fire department, will we get better service? I certainly hope so, and I'm looking forward to that. But are we going to seek any recompense for what we now have to pay for?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, that, that might be a question that's, that's more legal in nature and maybe is something that discussed in a legal framework, if, if you will. I'm really hard-pressed to answer that right now.
I didn't expect you to, but I certainly think it's a reasonable question to be asked and something that we should at least take a look at because we are now down, it looks like, at least $400,000
Yeah.
in savings that we could have had.
And that's something I can discuss separately offline with the city attorney. And I will.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like to say that I concur with the city manager. I consider this a status report of transparency and also the depth of what we have and hopefully what we will gain as a goal. I think that it is a well-written document. And I concur with the city manager that it is something that the city council needs to read and to be able to refer to in the future. Thank you.
Yes. So, please grab a pen. I have pages for you and I'm just going to relay the information. I expect responses. So, the first one is, how much more money or how many, how many more dollars are we going to be anticipating and expending? If you do have that anticipation, based on the projected revenues superseding or expenses that was presented on June 4th for the proposal? The second one question is, if you look on page 34, you'll notice that there's a charge of $13,000. You can further extrapolate on that. Then you'll also notice on page 135, there's a transition about a battalion chief. And there's $219,000 that suppose it was supposed to be anticipated. But for whatever reason, it was just disseminated amongst several staff. Page 145, if you go to that page, which I'm going to, you look at the 15 captains have been selected for conditional offers for employment. I'm anticipating that that is something that reoccurred in the past, is no longer in the present, but you can clarify that. And then, if you go to page 145, you will note, Victorville Fire Department will become the second highest in call volume agency with CON FIRE. So, what are the current recorded response times? And in 2016, we read that the number of service calls per capita was 37% higher than any other city in the county, making us one of the highest. Please consider responding to that. Page 151.
You have 30 seconds?
Use, the use of tires may be a potential air quality management district. Have we reported this to ADA QMD for potential violations? And the last one is on page 164. If you look at page 164, Exhibit A, Proposal Budget, I have no clue what I'm seeing here and how it's contextualized in terms of this file and report that we're supposed to file and receive.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I can, and there was a lot of questions there, and I know we've got good notes and good records, I would like the permission to just follow up separately with Councilmember Gomez and answer those questions and make sure that we understand the questions correctly and so that we can provide the, the best answers.
Certainly, that can be done.
This item is just a receive and file. I don't think any further actions required at this time.
This is just to receive and file?
Correct.
I would venture, I would venture out to...
Excuse me, you're out of order, please. So, I'm still talking. So, we don't need to make a motion?
You don't typically, you can if you want to make a motion and formalize it that you have received and, and filed it. It's up to you, but typically, when it's just receive and file, it's not required.
I would venture out to make that motion that, for the sake of transparency, which is a vocabulary word that our constituency looks highly up upon, is we bring this to the next agenda item as a communication, a written communication, and take it out of the consent calendar because that could be a potential error that not only bites us back or nips us in the butt, but it's something that I think we can correct as, as we're listening to the error, which I don't know when it came about.
So, Madam Mayor, may I? It's already been, it's, it's no longer on the consent calendar. It was pulled. So, it is, it is at this moment a separate item. It's at your, it's at your discretion, Madam Mayor.
I would like a motion in a second.
Oh, certainly, Madam Mayor. So, that I move that on item C, C seven, that was pulled for separate consideration, that we receive and file the transition report that was offered to the council. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
So, I'm going to anticipate that the first motion, which was the main motion, still lies. And this was a subordinate motion that Jones brought up to the table. Is that correct?
I did not hear a second on your first motion.
Right, but we also didn't hear it say it was a dead motion. So, I don't know if we're going to anticipate...
It failed because of, there was no second on it. So, now we have a motion that has been seconded.
Right, so now that makes it clear to our public that a motion was made and there was no second. And that's the clarity that I wanted to anticipate for the public. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we move on to written communications. We start with item D one. Award of contract for filter vessel recoding and media replacement at Alavato Treatment Plant. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the award of contract for filter vessel recoding and media replacement at Alavato Treatment Plant to ERS Industrial Services for an amount not to exceed $409,160.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask councilmembers if they have any questions of staff. Two-minute time limit. Questions of staff?
And for me, Madam Mayor, thank you.
No questions of staff at this time?
Yes. Is this a new contract? Or is this piggybacked?
This is, this is a new contract.
So, are dealing with business with this entity would be starting today if it's approved, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I have one last, one other thing. If the filter's coating life is 10 years, why were we not either anticipating or bringing to the agenda something of this nature so that we don't have to accrue any arsenic or any, all these little things that end up coming up? I'm anticipating that staff is always on track when it comes to, it's a 10-year life expectancy of anything. But to go three years beyond and make something a little bit more harsher, it really kind of says to me, do we have a checklist of sorts? And if that's not the case, what was anticipated in this particular item with the coating?
Certainly, the, the filter vessels were inspected last year and were still in somewhat decent shape. So, we try and extend the life as long as possible as this is a significant cost.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, may I? So, and it's correct that with the, the, correct me if I'm incorrect, that with the, the damage that ensued in the last year, that the filtration system that we have in place would have captured any of the erosion of the paint, et cetera. So, there was no risk to the, to our people?
Correct. There was no breakthrough or anything of that nature. So, no risk of the public and nothing in the water system.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, then, in that anticipation, when you have arsenic in water, there's certain amounts of levels that are allotted or allowed within the water system before it's, you know, violations of sorts. So, in anticipation of Mrs. Jones, I presume that she meant there was zero arsenic. But reading this article, there, this documentation, there was levels of arsenic, but not enough that would cause any harm or any damage. That's my clarification.
Yeah, it's kind of a separate issue. The arsenic we remove is, is somewhat separate than the, the coating on the vessel. So, but we treat down to below the acceptable limits for arsenic.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you. I think that's where all the questions. Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Staff recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Item D two, confirming the annual special tax amount to be levied in Community Facilities District CFD 01-01 for fiscal year 2019-2020. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Councilmember Jones, yeah.
Thank you.
I believe Councilmember Jones has a conflict on this, so...
I have a conflict of interest. I'd like to be excused and, and be called back once the item has been...
This is the item?
Yes. So, I wish to be excused and I'll return once the item's been completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation, please?
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-048 and order the annual special tax to be applied to property taxes of affected parcels.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. So, the approximate $280,000, is this the amount that's going, that is already including the administration fee of the casualty services along with the assessments of the amounts? Yes or no? That's my first question. The second question is, the detailed report shows how many units? They're not enumerated. I didn't venture out to call, count each one. I'm presuming that staff has that number at hand. Again, that question was, the detailed reports show how many units, houses, that are being affected? My third question is, what authority, process, and procedure does the city council have to modify this Resolution 19-048, Section 2? And you can see that on page 247 where there's an authority. If you can explain that in my last and final question for this one, is the fourth one. Do the special taxes cover the same special circumstances that, or the elements that are covered with the LMAD six? Yes or no?
So, Madam Mayor, council, to start, the first question was, does the amount being collected cover the administrative costs? And the answer to that is correct, yes. The second question, I believe, was, what authority does the council have to approve this resolution? When the district is first, was first formed in 2001, the requirements of the city council at the time were adopt the, the method of apportionment of this assessment to be levied annually by resolution, annually, in accordance with the original formation documents. There was a, an initial ballot procedure that took place with the landowner at the time, which was, in most cases, in these cases where the, the original developer would have approved that original district formation. And they require that the council then adopt annually by resolution, which is what is taking place tonight, the annual rate. If you will notice on the detail, it identifies a maximum rate that's allowed and the applied rate, the maximum rate being set at approximately $413. The applied rate is $319, which is less than what's maximum allowed based on the original formula. And the parcel count, to answer that question, it's listed on page 264. Page 17 to 17, it's 899 parcels that are affected.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Page 264 of the agenda. There's 899 parcels affected by the district.
And then, the last question was, special taxes, is that the same circumstances with LMAD?
Um, no. Actually, CFD taxes are governed by a separate government code than what, than how lighting and landscaping districts are formed. Lighting and land district, landscaping districts are formed under the guidance of the 1972 Act, which is a different area of the code. CFD legislation was formed in 1982, which is, it's just governed under two separate sections of the government code. In this particular case, no, there aren't similar improvements being funded by the separate districts. So, you have mostly just debt service that was utilized to fund infrastructure projects identified by the original developer in 2001. And that's what's being funded here. Whereas, for the landscape district, it's the landscaping, the perimeter landscaping for the properties.
Thank you for that clarification.
And Madam Mayor, if Councilmember Gomez, the, the next item, D three, is a similar approval, so if she has, she may have similar questions, I'll be available to answer those as well.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second to adopt Resolution Number 19-049, 48. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Jones absent. Motion carries with Councilmember Jones absent.
Now we move on to item D3. Confirming the annual special tax amount to be levied in, in Community Facilities District CFD 07-01 for fiscal year 2019-2020. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-049 and order the annual special tax to be applied to property taxes of affected parcels.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit.
Yes. So, you anticipated my question, Mr. Harris, and it's the same thing. They look to be very similar. I'm just presuming that they're just different areas. But in this one, I'm going to go ahead and, if there's an obligation with service debt fees for any structures or developments which individuals are now paying for, how are these bonds being paid and how are they affecting our taxpayers currently? Or is it a special CFD that it's only involving the taxpayers in that particular area? And why am I not seeing this in our commercial demands? They're not going to show up in the payroll. And if they are, would you be able to point them out as what they would show up?
And so, to answer the, actually, I think you answered your own question. Yes, this district is a specific area. The map is identified and attached to the, to the staff report, actually to the, to the resolution. It is, the rates are set to fund the annual debt service principal and interest. We serve, as the city, we serve as a fiduciary over this fund, over this district in which we collect through the county tax rolls the amount that you see identified as the, the charge on the, on the, on the detailed list there. And then, yes, we send the money to the trustee at the time the debt service is required to be paid. And you will see that on our wires, identified on your actual warrant.
Okay, and then, do we have any reserve fund capability with this? And then I'm looking, I'm assuming that this was a 30-year bond loan?
That is correct.
Versus, why wouldn't we have adopted a 20 versus a 10? Was it the scale of money? Or how, how was that even determined?
I think at, at the time that the bonds originally issued, the idea is to, one, the developer to collect then enough money that they can to, to finance the infrastructure required to, to complete their project. But two, come up with a, a length of term of the, of the debt payback that, that doesn't overburden the, the residents. And typically, in these cases, a 30-year payback scenario is the most appropriate as to not have the rate annually be so high that it, that it would overburden the residents for the 30-year period. And so, yeah, so it is a 30-year period, and I think, hopefully, that, I think that answers your question.
And then the reserve funds?
Oh, I'm sorry. And so, in this particular case, the funds, the reserve funds are held with the trustee. And so, that we don't locally hold those reserve funds, but there were originally reserve funds established at the time of the issuance of the bond, set aside with the trustee and held and maintained and invested by the trustee.
Is there any law or controlling documents that would say what percentage of reserve funds? Or that's just optional? It could be zero, it could be more?
No, in, in the case of these types of districts, there's usually a three-tiered rule that you would use, which determines the original reserve fund amount as well as the, the maintenance amount. In most cases for these CFDs, the, that original amount that's set up, it becomes your, your, your maintenance amount. So it's maintained at that same amount for the, for the term of the, of the bonds. And the interest that accrues in that reserve fund is then deposited to the, to the bond fund and made available to pay debt service.
Thank you. No further questions?
Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 19-049.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, so is, is the motion to include the ordering of annual special tax to be applied to property taxes for the affected parcels?
So moved includes anything the staff recommended. There's no alterations, so modifications?
Sorry, I'm not...
It was just the approval of the, the, the motion was to approve the resolution, and, and there was no mention made of the annual special tax to be applied. Second prong of the recommendation.
So, so moved means everything that staff has recommended from the beginning?
So moved means, no, it's a legitimate question.
I'm giving you, I'm providing you the interpretation, but if you would like me to spell it out, I don't have an issue.
No, actually, what so moved means, if I could be bold enough to clarify, is when the chair is looking for a specific motion, that's what's stated. And if a council member agrees with that, then you simply, then you're simply saying so moved as to what the chair said. It's not the full staff recommendation. They're two separate things.
So, for clarification, for the last two and a half years that I've been here, this has been normal protocol. If you want to change it, that's your prerogative. But as I stated, and I'm not changing it, what I can do is go ahead and read the Resolution 19-049 map, you know, attachment, and as recommended, that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-049 and order the annual special tax to be applied to property taxes of the affected parcel. Nothing added extra, just whatever staff has recommended.
No, and I understand, I understand what you're saying. It's just, Madam Mayor, if I may continue, is procedurally, to be very precise, when someone says so moved, it's what the chair has, has invited in terms of a motion. It's not the full staff recommendation.
Councilmember Jones?
That's procedural, that's procedurally correct, correct as regards our adopted parliamentary rule.
Councilmember Jones, I appreciate your interpretation. My interpretation has been clarified as to what I meant. And I've established that if you would like to change it and not second it, that's your prerogative. But I continue so moved, which meant what I just stated. If you want to reinterpret it differently, you can go ahead and say that. But like I said, so moved, in my interpretation, meant what I've just stated. I don't think we need immense words.
That's fine.
Both category intentions or ideologies.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's not ideologies, as a matter of fact.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
But if, if the council i- is fine with the definition of so moved that has been intended here, I'm good with that.
I needed a motion and a second.
It's already been motioned and seconded.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez and a second by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D4. Contract renewals, annual supply and service agreements. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and Board of Directors award contract renewals on the annual supply and service agreements to various vendors for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, per the adopted budget on June 4, 2019.
Thank you. Again, councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? And this is a two-minute time limit.
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have no questions.
I do. So for the first question, I have four questions here. The first one is, which of these items in the vendor ship list are the sole source contracts? None of them are labeled, and I would like to know which ones are. The second question is, if you look at the discussion, which is the last sentence of page 277, it talks about a majority and the contract pricing. I like an interpretation of that verbiage. Number three, if you look at the listed vendors, how many years consecutively have each service city-related business? And does the city typically offer this bid as a whole, as seen today? In other words, was this the same step taken consecutively for the last two years? My fourth question is, if all of the apportionments for June 4, 2019 were already established, what happened in the terms of two weeks prior to now that we did not anticipate the executive's team already re-appropriating that? So let me rephrase the question here. For the last question is, these items are already appropriated in the budget for June 4. They're done, settled. I understand that they need to come to council, but why bring them up to council if they have already been re-appropriated? Does council have the authority to negate and disappropriate these monies? I'm anticipating yes, but you can explain. I've not encountered this before.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as of the sole source question, based upon the report that's provided, you can't tell, and that would require some effort. The staff could come back and, and share those answers with you. I can tell you that notwithstanding sole source or not, all of these contracts have complied with your purchasing rules governing the award of contracts. I think, question number two I didn't quite get, but I think three and four I can kind of lump together where the question was asked, how many years have they been under contract? It's hard to answer that for, just the voluminous nature of vendors here. But effectively, what we are doing here is now that the budget has been passed, and it was passed on June 4 for the date starting July 1, which is the start of your fiscal year, these are contracts that are existing contracts with us that have life remaining on their service contract. It's very typical for us to have five-year contracts where we're required to renew them annually so that we have a budget that coincides with, with the actual purchasing contract. So now that we have a budget effective July 1, then what we do, and to try to simplify bringing back each and every one of these contracts on a variety of different dates throughout the year, we do it in one, one motion, therefore listing all the various contracts that we have so that you can prove them once, and we can get the extensions in place and continue the operations without being inefficient, if you will, and having to bring them back on an individual basis. If somebody caught question number two, I don't know, George, maybe you got that? If not, I can, we can look at the audio.
Would you mind repeating question number two?
Yeah, so in the discussion, it says, "And a majority have agreed to honor the contract pricing with the inclusion of new state regulations involving the Department of Industrial Relations prevailing wage requirements, SB 854 and AB 219."
And all of our contracts do contain provisions that require compliance with all state, local, and federal laws. So that would be included with...
And I guess, I think the first part, what, did all these vendors agree to this pricing? And I think that as a result of the contracts that language is written, we were able to extract that information and place it on this list. So, all the vendors have agreed to the pricing and to the, to the amounts that, that you see before you.
And as, I think, as a fair, the city of Victorville is a business. And as fair as we can be, I think we don't just, or we shouldn't just anticipate that all these vendors automatically get the $94,000 contract, $1.2 million contract, $120,000 million, half a million. To me, we are looking at the best interest of our community. And so when we get these contracts where I can anticipate, for example, one of our participants being with us for 20 years, I would presume that we would make a change.
Anyone else?
I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. I think each of these items are unique in, in their own right. You may have cases where just because we've been doing business with them for 20 years isn't the best decision to, to find somebody else, especially if the service that they're offering is being offered with the best quality of service at the best price. Then I, I, those are certainly cases where I think the fact that you've been doing business with them for 20 years isn't a good enough reason, certainly not a professional enough reason to say we're not going to continue to do business with that entity. So I'm not, not sure that's a, an appropriate methodology to decide the continuance of services.
Is there anyone else?
Let me just simply say that this is a list of vendors that is basic services to their, our community and to the city. And beyond that, I cannot understand why it is such a crisis to discuss this when this is an everyday situation, but it's something that we need to do in order to approve for the services that we give to each and every one of you. So, I, it overwhelms me many times, the discussion on this, when this is just basic community services that have to be provided. And with the budget to cover it, I know that when we have special cases, then that would be a special situation that we would have to approve separately.
Thank you. I do not, oh, I do have one card. Ramiro Rodriguez?
We don't deny certain services supplying, certain companies supplying good services for many years. But, in, on behalf of capitalism, it's up to us to ensure that there's somebody else that does a better job. Just because they're doing a good job for 20 years doesn't mean there's nobody else out there that can do a better job for less price, or might even do an even better job for more price. But if you don't search out and, and send out feelers to these companies that, that we are looking, then how are we going to know? So capitalism is, is not so much of a service, but it is how businesses run and how the world is run. So there's a lot of people out there that provide the same kind of services, maybe even at a better price, or maybe even more price, but we can get more services or better services. Doesn't mean it's going to be cheaper. A lot of times when you bid out construction buildings, or it doesn't matter, you don't go with the cheapest ones, and then you go with the best one that builds quality. So, in my behalf, it's, I'm saying for these companies, competition is good. And that's what we're all looking for. Competition keeps everybody on their toes, providing better service. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I mean, if, if the interpretation from my comments weren't, weren't clear in speaking to the requirement that we comply with the purchasing rules, one of those requirements that we have, especially in the cases where we might have done business with an entity for 20 years, that doesn't necessarily mean that we've been issuing them a contract uncompetitively. You know, we'll issue a contract for a period of five years, and it's fairly common practice that as we're approaching the term ending for the five years, we'll go back out to the market and make sure the prices are good. And so, there is a competitive nature to all of these contracts that, that we award.
Thank you, and I know that you do that.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question at this point? So, springboarding from your comment, Mr. Metzler, these vendors originally went through the proper bid process. At a point, at some point, they were determined that they were competitive, they can complete the services that they, that they were willing to undertake. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then this is, this is just merely their exercising their one-year option to extend the contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that the Council and Board of Direction, excuse me, the Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yeah, so if there is competition, I don't see why staff didn't make sure that the dates and issues would have been presented. Definitely would have showed something very distinct. We have stagnation, no competition, stale service, mediocrity. When we have someone working for us for that long a period, we failed to go above and beyond to look what is in the best interest of our community. So as individuals, you know, we can see as a perfect example, this was the same pattern principally used with the Victorville Police, Victorville Fire Department. For the last 10 years, most councils believed that they weren't providing the same service or adequate service. We have a list of things, of violations that have been upheveled or up proposed for us to see what's going on. That could be the potentiality with any of these vendors as well. So, the, the reasoning still stands, whether it's called professionalism, loyaltyism, whatever isms are, or whatever craft is, you've got to make sure that you understand that our audience has a different perspective from a CEO that we have in the city. Accordingly, the same with council members and our staff that's out here. So not everybody thinks the same, and that's the privilege that we have to be able to enunciate what it is that we want to say without hopefully clashing. But that's an opinion that we would like to share and base on the record. It's not a tax here, just merely what we've perceived.
Any further comments? Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D5. City property insurance renewal. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and Board of Directors approve an additional $57,763.20 in order to be able to pay the required city property insurance renewal as needed to protect the city's approximate $191,345,099 total insured valuation for its facility, vehicle, and equipment assets.
Thank you. Councilmembers, again, any questions of staff? Two-minute... Two-minute time limit.
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. In regard to paying the insurance renewal, is there a weighing so that if we pay more, it automatically goes up? If they pay less, we get a rebate? Does that come into play at all, or is this just a flat insurance policy?
Madam Mayor, City Council, to answer Councilmember Cox's question, this is a property insurance policy, not necessarily the risk pool insurance. So this is the cost of insurance for that particular year, as opposed to what you may be used to in the risk pool where we insure a particular year, and if there's a review of losses and gains in, in a future, at a future time, maybe 10 years later, there could be a refund if more was paid in and, and losses were less than, than anticipated. In this particular case, this is like purchasing your car insurance. If you don't have any losses over the year, you, you paid your insurance and they, and they keep it. So this is, like I said, so this is in particular to property insurance and not necessarily a risk pool coverage.
No, it's not this, I, I know workman's comp for one, you know, if you don't have any accidents or claims or anything, but it has to be a period of years, and then you start getting.
That's correct. So in those situations like work comp, you would pay a premium based on an actuarial amount. And after you have claims in that particular year, they, those claims are managed over a period of multiple years. And then after they evaluate after a period, and a lot of times it's eight, nine, maybe 10 years later, after they've closed all those claims, if the anticipated amount that was spent is, is greater than or less than, there may be an assessment if those claim, if the amounts were, were greater. If the, if it's less, then in a lot of cases, and, and City of Victorville actually has a great track record in that regard, and we, we typically do get refunds after a period of years. That's not that, this type of insurance. This is the type of, this is straight liability, property protection.
And I understand that. Thank you very much.
I, I think it's just worth noting that the insurance goes up in this case, not because of our losses.
That is absolutely correct.
Other losses.
Yeah, so if you, if you read the detail in the back, they identify why, one, this very steep increase occurred, namely because of the history that, that's been established in California and the Midwest. And so this is the excess insurer who's insuring more than just the City of Victorville, they're insuring, in, in a lot of cases, most public agencies, and even some private companies as well. And so when you add up the wildfires, earthquake damage, across the whole, the whole spectrum of, of property that's being covered, they did a reassessment and, and figured that they needed to charge slightly more in this particular year. It's just unfortunate that we didn't discover this, or they didn't actually notify us of the increase until after we adopted our budget at the last meeting. So I believe I was provided this increase the, almost the morning of we adopt, that we adopted the budget. And so it was impossible to include it at that time, which is where you would typically seen it. You would just seen it as part of the budget document, but it came to me, it came to me late, that's why it's now being presented to you tonight.
It's understandable that this happened. Anyone else?
So as a case in point to the former agenda, is there any reason why the risk assessment and the inquiry to the property insurance came in two weeks later, when on June 4th, the adopted budget went through? Now we see that staff budgeted for an estimate of 12% with an increase. The premium is now 22.8%. Was this anticipated?
It was not, which is why it's being presented to you tonight.
So this goes to show how a council member can perceive the reason why if something cannot be forecasted, or something cannot be proactive, perhaps those types of awards to our service providers need to be double-checked and triple-checked as to what is, if that's going on. I don't remember council receiving any member of, any memo in terms of staff anticipation or any kind of convening to let us know that they're actually working for the best of what is in our city. And that's no response required, that's just a rhetorical question on my behalf. And next, was, was there an anticipation of a cost inflator, or is that even a part of, of variable that would have even been considered?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, City Council, I, on page 308 of, of the staff report in paragraph two, you do, you do see that, in early conversations with our insurance brokers, they identified a, that we should expect a rate of 9% to 12% increase. So what, what you approved in the budget on, on June 4th included a rate that anticipated the 9% to 12% increase. And then later, on June 3rd, literally the morning before we adopted the budget, after the, the document was actually in your hands, we were notified that that, that increase was 10.8% higher than what they told us to anticipate when, when they got information from the broker. So I, I wished that we, we could have been quick enough to include it, but the agenda had already been accepted and distributed the previous Friday. That's why it's being presented to you tonight.
You know, to put some context into the explanation that you provided, I know that the City of Victorville provides on the HDL reporting that comes out yearly in order to what kind of businesses we're going to be able to have in the city. You know, if we didn't pay so much close attention to the HDL, and what demographics, what kind of stores we would be getting, and what particular areas, I think we would be able to venture out and.
You have 30 seconds.
Um, different, like a Trader Joe's, depending on education level, but of course, that's not there. And the reason I bring this is as an analogy, is to be able to bring foresight as one expert says this, but then the night thereafter says that. Well, with HDL, they're also the expert, they're saying one, one thing, and then a year later, we're still in that same demographic of bringing on businesses and organizations. And I think that's what my principled idea was, is to anticipate things like this.
Your time is up.
Relying on experts.
I do not have any ask speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Uh, yes. Madam Mayor, I move that the council and board of directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, standard lease agreement for building 769 and 785. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the board of directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority approves entering into the State of California Standard Agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection for building 769 and 785 adopts Resolution Number SCLA-A19-006 and authorizes the deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit.
None, excuse me, none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, this is an anticipation of item D6.
Did you have something, Ms. Jones?
I don't, thank you.
Approximately $216 million in revenues.
How about you, Jim?
No, they don't have questions, they already told you.
Excuse me, don't be interrupting.
They already told you.
I'm talking to Jim.
They don't have any questions.
Okay, continue, and I will recess.
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't get that, you're going to recess first?
It's your second warning.
I'm sorry, would you repeat yourself, because I'm not understanding what you need.
This meeting, we, we reconvened the meeting, and I was, let's see, councilmembers, if they had any questions of staff, and I was asking Mr. Cox if he had anything at this time?
No.
Okay. Ms. Gomez?
So this is a question in terms of why another amendment, June 4th we passed, we proposed before that, we had a workshop, but now we have an amendment to our proposed budget. So we have approximately $216 million in revenue. We have $219 million in expenses. That was about two weeks ago. So how is it possible that our finance department did not foresee another amendment? This is the second item, that modification to the budget is being publicly announced. As a council member, I have received no memos, no staff, no staff reporting as, as to convening of a modification, or no explanation of such to consider any amendments that have, that are going to be considered tonight. Again, and I'm going to repeat this loud and clear, another method of no stable transparency, and I don't expect clarification on transparency either. I'm going to ask that the executive team take a closer look and start using those memo, those memos and those letterheads to keep council abreast of all city dealings. It serves no good to be a puppeteer right in front of, in front of every one of you and have executive team administration be providing all the responses and the recommendations, where no council member is being convened to understand the reporting. And if I am wrong, and I'm the only council member that is not understanding the reporting, and I'm being ousted. I would ask that I be included as one of the 20% of the 100% of the other council members, if that is the case, because I'm not getting the memo on this particular item. And it's really frustrating to see another amendment, and it's, if this is very typical, please continue to say that this is typical, because as one of the council members here, I don't expect typicality to be modifying consistently our proposed budget once it has been proposed, unless that's typical.
Mayor and council, if I may add some explanation to this particular item and why you are seeing a budget amendment for revenue two weeks after the budget was passed. The budget is, is a snapshot in time, it's our best projections at the time we bring it forward. We were in active negotiations on this particular lease when the budget was brought forward, and so we projected a more conservative revenue amount. And when negotiations were finalized and we were able to actually obtain a higher amount, then we will bring back that item to you and, and ask for an additional revenue appropriation. I think it's a more conservative and professional approach to take to budgeting, and ends up letting you see when the actual, when we actually anticipate the revenue, instead of maybe over-budgeting in revenue projections. I think that's a less favorable method to budget with. And so, yes, you will see revenue and possibly expenditure changes to the budget almost at every council meeting like you do throughout the years, because budgeting is just a tool. And then when actuals come in, either higher or lower, we bring those before council.
Thank you. Good explanation.
Sophie, does that basically translate to this actually provides greater transparency?
I, I would agree with that.
And I'm not finished with my question, and I don't need clarification for the term.
Your time is up.
Interpretation of transparency, thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, we need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that the board of directors of SCLA take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. So I don't need anybody to clarify the term that I say transparency. Everybody has their own way of describing transparency, so I didn't ask for that clarification from legal counsel. There is nothing to hide for someone to challenge the way I projected it, but if there was, it just sorted out, and it just reveals much more than we anticipated revealing. In that term, I wanted to make sure that you understand the reason why I questioned this, because the $19.6 million from the SEC case that we had to pay out was not convened and modified in our project. 8.6 of that was to defend Mr. Metzler. So when I don't, when I have something that's not being modified, and we're just spending our taxpayer dollars, just like for Mayor Gloria, $18,000 for something that happened outside of here, to me, that's our money. It's not transparent when it's not coming across. So if I misuse the modification of this particular item, it's because I have 19.6 million in my head and $18,000, which should not have come out of our taxpayer dollars and approved by the city council here.
May I speak, this had, these comments had nothing to do with this agenda item in front of you, it's just another excuse to bring up the fact that we had a lawsuit that we wouldn't roll over on, and we had to spend money. This is as transparent as staff can possibly get. They negotiated an agreement, when they got the agreement completed, they brought it to the city council for approval. Extremely transparent, everything is professional and well-done.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Give me a moment.
I will move on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
No, I didn't vote, you're not going to count me as unanimously, because I didn't vote for that, I'm sorry, you can't just automatically do that.
Madam Mayor, point of order, may I state my point? May I state my point? Yes. According to our policy manual, when a, a vote is not heard, it's understood to be a vote in the affirmative. That's why the 5-0 vote.
No, because I spoke up, I'm not silent, and I'm not a statue. So my vote was not unanimous. I asked for a small respite of time to capture where I was at. So I'm not for that, so don't put that. I asked for a small, brief moment to capture what we're on.
Welcome to.
That's all I did.
Item D7, amendment number four to project, amendment number four to project funding agreement for right-of-way acquisition for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve amendment number four to the project funding agreement for right-of-way acquisition with San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and the city for right-of-way acquisition for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project, extending the term to June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time?
None, thank you, for me.
I have no questions.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Gomez?
I'd like to know when the next Sandbag/SBCTA meeting is, and also, please provide in my inbox, Mr. Metzler, all documentation to the Green Tree Extension Project, including those closed-session items, information, documents that have not been provided to me. Today is not the only time that I've requested not only meetings, but information that has not been provided to me to make adequate voting lines in terms of the Green Tree Project. So I feel ousted from this particular item, and I've requested information publicly behind closed doors, and it has not been given to me. So I'm going to make another attempt to publicize and say that I'd like the information to be tallied here, because this information has not been transparent to Councilmember Gomez.
There is no ability to give you any closed-session information that is privileged unless the council votes to provide that to you.
I'm sorry, but as a council member, I have authority to listen to those tapes, and if you want to take that establishment, you feel free to write something formally to show that I'm not allowed to hear to any closed-session tapes.
That's not what you asked for, you asked for materials related to closed session.
Closed-session tapes include documents which all of us have received confidentially, and we've provided them back to you. This is not in litigation, and that's what I was told, it is privileged, I cannot have
I do not have any ask speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
I move that, if you're ready for the motion.
Yes, I am.
As staff recommended on the, for the Green Tree Extension Project, amendment number four to the project funding agreement, please note, this has been in the works a long time, and this has come from the county transportation in regard to, Transportation Authority as regard to funding.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yeah, I asked for questions, and they were not responded. Is there a reason why when I ask a question, I don't get a response during the allotted time? Is that like the silent treatment, or what is it? Or did you guys forget? I did ask questions, but no one answered my questions.
It was not understood that you asked.
Yes, it was, because once we establish council members have any questions, and I ask for questions, and no questions are revealed, it's starting to show something about our council here. I could have made a comment right here, right now, and that's my comment, my questions were not answered. It was very simple, a very simple question. When is the next meeting for SBCTA? I don't have to repeat them during the comment section, it's automatic. Mrs. Jones, this would be perfect for you to say, policy states when we ask questions, that we get the questions rendered, and it wasn't. It was a very simple question, the next SBCTA meeting.
Mayor Garcia, it'd probably be okay if Mr. Gangler wanted to answer the questions that were asked previously? There is a Mountain Desert Committee meeting this coming Friday in Victorville, and I don't remember the date of the next board meeting, but typically...
but typically, the board meeting is the first Wednesday of the month. So, that should be the July board meeting.
Because the information is truncated, I would appreciate the exact locations and times, if you don't mind, Mr. Metzler, providing that in my inbox.
I will be sending out an update. I usually send a monthly update in advance of the Mountain Desert Committee meeting and also the board meeting. And I will be sending one out before Friday to city council.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Item D8, Project Funding Agreement for Construction for the Bear Valley Road Overhead at BNSF Railroad Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the Project Funding Agreement with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority for the Bear Valley Overhead at BNSF Railroad Project for the construction phase, authorize the city attorney to make a non-sustancial revision to agreement, and the Bear Valley Road Overhead at BNSF Railroad Project to the city's development impact fee road list.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time?
Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
None. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I'll ask him because we've gone into procedure.
I'm asking you.
Okay, yeah, we're going to wait. All right, thank you. So, I look at this item, and I'm not sure if the Bear Valley Road Bridge over BNSF Railroad is what we have been talking about over the last couple of months. And if that's the case, if you can confirm. I don't have any question, but I'm just thinking it is what we've been discussing in the former months.
I don't recall any agenda items pertaining to this project in the last few months. There have been a number of agenda items over the last few years on this project. We did have a right-of-way acquisition for easements in an agreement with BNSF Railroad. And I don't recall when the last agenda item was, but this has come to city council before regarding this project.
So, the way I remember this is 21 parcels and we acquiring easement in a particular area with BNSF in front of that cement property on Bear Valley. That's what I'm thinking it was.
In this particular case, there are eight easements, which we've already acquired from various properties. And there are also some easements with BNSF Railroad, which we have already acquired. So, the right-of-way acquisition was completed for this project some time ago.
And the funding from this comes from Measure I? And is it half and half, or we have to provide some and then they give us some?
So, one of the funding sources would be a Highway Bridge Program federal grant. The other funding sources would be our own Measure I. I'm sorry. The other funding source would be the SBCTA Measure I, the Major Local Highway Program. And it would be matched with our Road Development Impact Fee. We would not have to pay our Road Development Impact Fee initially, but ultimately, it would have to be used as a match.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cox, you are going to wait for me?
I was going to wait to see if there's any questions on the funding, and there's not, so.
Thank you.
I need a motion in a second.
I will. So, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Measure I, Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Revisions. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council revise the Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2018-2019 to add the following three items and amounts to the plan. Seneca Road and Hisperry Road Storm Drain Improvement, Project Number 61029, $63,135. Mojave Road East Trail Traffic Signal, Project Number 62030, $931. And Engineering Services Categorical Project, $48,990.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Just one question. Is it possible, since I speak for myself, being a newly-elected individual here, what is inclusive in the five-year plan? I know that this is three additional, but I don't know what the original plan was. Could you possibly just briefly state something regarding that?
Yes. Yes, I'd be happy to. We didn't attach the plan that was approved. Maybe we should have attached that for reference. But what is included in the plan, it's supposed to be for five years, and it is supposed to include, especially for the current fiscal year, every expense that the city has in Measure I, which would include all of our capital improvement projects. It also includes what are called categorical expenses. And those include our operations and maintenance for functions like traffic signal maintenance, signing, striping. There are some traffic engineering charges. And so, it's basically everything, every budgeted expense that we have for Measure I should be included in that plan.
Would it be possible for us, or for myself, to get the original five-year plan, so for information purposes?
Yes, we can provide that.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Yes. So, I'm looking at the Storm Drain Improvement Program. I want to understand, what did it take for this to even be a project within the five-year plan in context with, we have an area in front of Davis Doris Park where multiple deaths have been caused due to flooding, but this is not part of the five-year plan? That's my first question. My second question is, I'm looking that we have also Mojave Road East Trail Traffic Signal. What the process was in getting that particular item, and that's in context with having several deaths on particular streets in the city of Victorville where no street lighting or no traffic signals will be invested in unless you have at least four deaths. So, I want to understand, how are we picking, deciding? What are the protocols this has come to us on multiple occasions?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as it relates to question number one, I would advise that Brian not respond as there's an ongoing legal matter involving that particular item that she's speaking to. But I think as to speaking to the methodology as to how the capital.
Mr. Metzler, if I may interrupt. I didn't catch the last portion of what you said, something about legal matter? I'm sorry.
So, what I would encourage Brian to speak to, if you will, is the methodology that goes into establishing the CIP.
And the reason was what? That's the part I didn't hear, Mr. Metzler.
So, yes, we do have a methodology for prioritizing our capital projects. And in particular, for road projects, for pavement projects, we use basically a benefit-cost ratio for the major capital road projects. For, and that's for pavement rehabilitation. For our solar seal maintenance projects, we've been selecting a target area, a target area every year, based on the pavement condition index. And so, we work with our Public Works Operations and Maintenance people on that, and we collectively develop a target area. So, that covers the road priorities. For drainage projects, we have a limited amount of funding available for that. And so, we have prioritized that. Basically, it's been based on either maintenance issues. And sometimes, there have been erosion issues, which we have corrected for our drainage projects in the last few years. So, that's our method for prioritizing our projects.
And I'm going to ask anyone of staff to please. I didn't hear what Mr. Metzler's saying clearly. He's not going to answer my question. I didn't hear what he said, something about litigation. I don't know if I heard that word. That's why it was recommended that you not respond. So, I need clarification if that's what it was. I didn't hear. It was mumbled.
My original comment to Mr. Gangler was to not speak to your item one, as there is an active case involving litigation. So, my advice to Mr. Gangler was not to answer one, but instead speaks more so specific to your questions related to how the methodology established, or what methodology is used to establish the CIP.
Thank you for finding the time to repeat yourself. Sorry, I just didn't, I missed what you had said. And then, if you remember the second question, I don't think I should respond or re-ask it?
Could you re-ask it, please?
Yeah, it was about the traffic signals. Is it the same process and methodology?
Traffic signal projects are based on evaluating a particular intersection. And they're justified by traffic signal warrants that are established by federal and state guidelines. And any project is always limited to the available funding that the city has. So, there are funding constraints.
Okay, so, one, it's based on state guidelines and funding availability?
Yes, there are traffic signal warrants to justify a traffic signal. And it's also based on the available funding that the city has.
So, if we wouldn't have any funding available, and it did meet the criteria, and three council members decided to put a traffic signal somewhere, it wouldn't be legitimate in terms of allowing that authority to put a traffic signal?
Well, the city council has the authority to approve a project, as you know. They have the authority to approve a budget. And, but I would not recommend installing a new traffic signal unless it met. It clearly was justified by meeting traffic signal warrants.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10, La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange Environmental Mitigation Agreement with Rivers and Lands Conservancy. Recommendation is that the city council approve a consultant slash professional service contract with RLC in an amount not to exceed $28,000. Any questions of staff by council members? None?
Yes. So, I was reading this, and when I thought, when I saw Nesqually Interchange, I was just thinking about the interchange that we still owe. But further reading this, we're implementing Habitat Remove-Oro Grande Wash, which reminds me of the recent ceremony that we had over by the basin project. So, is there any connection there? Or is that just totally something distinct?
No, the, this La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange Project doesn't have any connection with the Amethyst Basin Project that was recently completed.
So, then would you mind helping me understand then what this? I know we're trying to get a contractor, but I want to know if it's because we still owe the money for the county for this interchange? And what does the Oro Grande Wash specifically have to do with this piece of pathway?
So, when the interchange was constructed, it removed habitat from the Oro Grande Wash. And there were three environmental permits that we had to obtain to construct the interchange. You know, they're listed in the staff report. One of them was from the Corps of Engineers. Another one was from the La Houghton Regional Water Quality Board. And the other one was from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And those permits required that we set aside a certain amount, a certain acreage of land, to mitigate the habitat that was removed from the interchange project. And so, that was supposed to be at least a five-year process to monitor that land, to make sure that it was suitable, it was being maintained. And then, one of the requirements was that we had to contract with a third-party organization to maintain that land in perpetuity. And so, that's why we're coming to city council now, is to enter into an agreement with that third-party organization.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, Jane.
I think I heard the question, do we owe money to the county? Why would we owe money to the county? Hate to have these things hanging out there when they have no talking about. We don't owe money to the county. It wasn't a county project. It's a city project. Things have to be answered. Sorry about that.
She has an answer for that? She doesn't hear me. I thank you. I think that's all we have.
I move the item as recommended by staff.
Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
I move the item as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D11, Purchase of a 2020 Kenworth T370 Truck with Peterson TL3 grapple loader. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of a new Kenworth T370 truck with Peterson TL3 loader and Model HTX1824 body in the amount of $199,011.90 under the National Joint Powers Alliance, now known as Sourcewell, Contract Number 081716 NAF, as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2018-2019, capital improvement project budget.
Thank you. We have a presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
We do have a couple of pictures and a short video clip we wanted to share this evening, just to give you an idea of what we are proposing to purchase. If you're anything like me, you won't necessarily know what a grapple truck, or it's also referred to as a lightning loader, what that may be. So, we did have the opportunity to arrange a demonstration to come out to our Public Works Yard in March of this year. So, that's what you see pictured here, is the grapple truck itself. And this is our very own John Garcia. Following our visit to the Public Works Yard, we were able to actually take the piece of equipment out into one of our areas that is commonly known for illegal dumping and give it a try. So, you can see he is grabbing a large item, which is what this equipment is intended for, to assist in loading those items more efficiently. Currently, those, as indicated in the staff report, are loaded into a rear-loading trash truck and compacted. So, we are limited on capacity. And it's very hard on the equipment. So, this is a much more efficient way to do things. And while we were out there, I didn't get to stay the entire time, but they told me, let's really put this to the test. So, let's pick up a boat. And believe it or not, there are quite a few boats that end up out in our desert. So, this is just a short video clip to give you the idea of what this piece of equipment can do. And this entire process took about two minutes. And once it was loaded into the container, there's actually still room to go around and pick up other trash and debris before you have to take a trip to the landfill or other drop-off site. So, that process of picking up the boat alone would have taken staff approximately 45 minutes per boat. And we would have to include a truck. We'd have to borrow a trailer, a winch, three staff members to load that up. So, it is quite labor-intensive. So, that is the purpose of the purchase of this type of equipment. It is a specialized piece of equipment, and this is the first that the city would be purchasing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Beautiful. Do we have any questions, anyone?
Yes.
I have only one question. How did the boat get out there?
It does take quite a bit of effort to get those items out into the desert, but your guess is as good as mine.
I'm sorry I asked that question, but I had to ask.
So, I'm going to assume with the confirmation of the Director of Community Services that the 2018-19 budget for the approximate $200,000 modification that's being requested was already figured in. Is that correct?
Correct. This capital purchase was originally appropriated in fiscal year 1718, and it was carried forward to the current fiscal year.
And I appreciate the fact that you took the time to present a visual aspect of what it is that we would perceive and see in the neighborhood when this abatement is happening. How often does the city anticipate using this purchase?
This will be incorporated into our daily operations. We anticipate that we will train our supervisor, who is actually here in the audience today, John Garcia, as well as two of our maintenance workers that are currently assigned to this division.
And then, if the city receives any active calls, would that trigger the community services staff to head over to this potential dump site? And dump site is what scare quotes, because I'm going to anticipate that a potential dump site could be someone's property, not just maybe a private property, or, I mean, city property. With a certain allotment of time, will that be the case, or?
It would be situational, so it would depend specifically what it is that's being reported. But certainly, we would incorporate that into our normal process. And if we need to involve code enforcement or anything, depending on who owns the property, we can certainly do that.
And then, the number for them to be able to contact, would that be under the trash pickup service, or is that something distinct? Where would they call?
You know, I don't have the phone number on me, but we do have this available as a form through our website. So, under the Community Services section, you can actually submit a form with pictures to give us some additional information on a proposed website. That's probably the best way to do it. And I would encourage anyone who does so to provide your contact information, so that we can follow up for additional information as needed.
And I know the purchase is being made through the general fund with community services. I would have anticipated that perhaps it would be with code enforcement or Public Works. These type of machineries, would I associate not with community services, it's more of a social program? How are we anticipating marketing something of this level for individuals to, hey, there's trash here? I mean, how is that? I know we have a hashtag, but I've not seen the hashtag since it was presented to me right here, so I don't know.
Yes. Well, just as, first as a correction, this is actually not funded from the general fund. This purchase is being funded from landfill mitigation. And in terms of marketing, we're certainly working on solutions to make it easier to report a problem of any kind across the city. So, this is something that could be incorporated to that as well.
Okay, I don't know if you can respond, or who else, but I appreciate the fact that you pointed out that the
You have 30 seconds.
landfill mitigation. I was presuming that because it's coming from the community services as a PowerPoint, it was also funded through community services, but I can now see landfill mitigation. Does anybody know how this anticipates where we're grabbing monies from, since it's not from the particular department? How do you associate that or make that even a decision?
The departments are all funded with different funds, not just because it's community services, and we're used to seeing community services relying in large part on general fund. They also rely on other funds, including solid waste, which landfill mitigation is connected to. So, this is something that we identify as a capital item, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, as a part of our rate plan that was adopted last year, and is likely why this item wasn't purchased earlier, was because we adopted a rate plan last year that actually helped bring this fund to a more fiscally sound position to where it can actually take on these types of capital expenses. So, landfill mitigation is the funding source that they identified, that's the eligible funding source to pay for an expense like this to satisfy the capital. Solid waste mitigation program.
I appreciate the explanation. I'll go ahead and move as recommended by staff.
Second. No, I still, I haven't gotten to that point yet. Thank you. I think that's for all the questions. At this time, I do not have any speaker cards. Now, I do need a motion in a second.
In anticipation, I've made the motion as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-12, 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference and Business Meeting. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council consider approving councilmember attendance to the League of California Cities Annual Conference and appoint a voting delegate and an alternate.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, did you want to present this?
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for allowing this matter to be placed on the agenda. Excuse me. There are effectively two elements to this agenda item. The first is determine whether the council wishes to approve councilmember attendance at the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference, which includes its expo as well as its business meeting. Once that is approved, if it is, the council can appoint a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the annual business meeting on October 18th. That's the last day of the conference. With regard to the purpose of the 2019 Annual Conference, and by way of introduction, let me quote from the League of California Cities website, quote, "Our goal is to provide exceptional educational experiences, networking opportunities, and innovative tools that will make attendees in their cities more successful," end quote. I think these words capture perfectly the intent and spirit of the annual conference. Additionally, as staff did a thorough job of detailing the particulars about this event, there remains little for me to add, other than to mention that if we approve attendance now, we will qualify for the early registration rates, which is a savings of about, of $50 per council member. And as to the second element of this item, we can appoint a voting delegate and up to two alternates, which may consist of council members or city officials. So, with that said, Madam Mayor, I hand the item back to you, and at the time in which you wish to invite a motion, I'm prepared to offer one as it relates to attendance at the conference. And with regard to the appointments, I'll leave that for you to administer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
At this time, I do not have any speaker cards on this item. First of all, I need a motion in a second, just to find out if councilmembers are interested in attending.
Yes, so Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action to approve councilmember attendance at the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference being held October 16 through 18 at the Long Beach Convention Center.
That was your motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Of a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Pay the motion, please.
Yes. My motion was that the council take action to approve councilmember attendance at the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference being held October 16 through 18 at the Long Beach Convention Center.
I don't think he's hearing you.
Oh, can you not?
Members to a T, I don't want to
Yes. Councilmember attendance.
That councilmembers attend.
Okay, all the councilmembers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, thank you.
But from there, we have to select.
I know, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, I will ask, actually, I would make a motion that Ms. Jones, are you interested in attending? You said yes, correct? Yes. Okay. I make the motion that we appoint you as our delegate.
I would be interested. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And do we just go one by one, or can I also make a motion for the two alternates?
You could do it in one motion.
Okay. And I make a motion that Mr. Harris, George Harris, be the first alternate. And the second alternate, our city manager, Keith Messler.
So, is that
Mr. Messler should be the first delegate, and Mr. George Harris should be the, I'm sorry, I was incorrect. Our city manager should be our first delegate, alternate, I'm sorry, alternate, and Mr. George Harris will be our second.
Of a clarification, that's all one motion, the motion being to have Councilmember Jones be the delegate, and to have Mr. Messler be the first alternate, and Mr. Harris be the second alternate.
Correct. In that order.
And I'll make a subordinate motion to have the delegate to be Mrs. Jones, and I'll be the first alternate, the first alternate to the same motion.
Is there a second?
Motion.
For the one for Jones to be the delegate and Gomez to be the alternate. Is there a second? There'd be no second, that motion dies?
Second, the original motion.
The original motion is
There's a motion and a second already made. Thank you.
The original motion is for Jones to be the delegate, city manager to be the alternate, and George Harris to be the second alternate.
Correct.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, is there a second?
I second that.
Motion made by Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Jones, and seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we move on to item D-13, discussion and possible action regarding the adoption and implementation of the GO request local government software. The recommendation is any action is at the discretion of the city council. Ms. Gomez, you can present this.
So, we have had, through the different council meetings, individuals coming with frustrations that they're not able to get staff in certain departments to be able to address issues. And so, it's been brought in the past that there's this program, this application called GO Quest. The City of San Bernardino uses it, many cities use it. And what you do is, you pull up your smartphone or your computer, your desktop, you have the app, you access it, and you place your complaint. That complaint stays open until a staff member has addressed it, and it shows you the progress. And if that has been sufficed, and you're happy, you won't be up here complaining. But if that request was open, and there's no means to have ended, and it's been a year or two, councilmembers would be able to go back into its history and probably try to understand what was the reasoning or what happened within the department that it didn't finish its outcome. And so, this was for discussion and possible action. I know Mr. Cox seconded to really tell the people that we're here to provide the best customer service. And in that option, I brought the GO request as an option that's viable for the communities to start using. And if not, you will hear so as the council begins to speak on this particular item.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. There are motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I do have questions of staff on this, if I might. Mr. Messler, do we have any idea as to what programming like this might cost the city? And just generally what the pros and cons are of this particular application?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, as to the cost, we're not exactly sure of the cost. We haven't gone that far. What I can tell you is that staff has done quite a bit to improve its customer service interaction. And one of the things that we shared with you earlier in the year was the changes in our website, actually, earlier in the fiscal year, the changes to the website to where we allow for the forms to be used, so that we have a portal in place where we can take resident complaints and respond to them much more quickly. And we're able to do that because the routing of those complaints, those issues, go directly to the departments that are responsible for the nature of the complaint. We have had the opportunity to look at the GO request item, and what I can tell you is it is a software system that really serves as a management tool to manage now better all of the complaints. And so, the services being offered under this GO request, we've found that there are a number of other service providers out there that provide similarly-natured service. So, you know, I would certainly suggest to you that staff be allowed to continue to evaluate the different types of tools that are out there, so that we can actually get a better management software to deal with our customer complaints. But that's something that we can evaluate. We can evaluate this GO request along with others to make sure that we're getting the best functionality, ultimately, in whatever it is we decide, the best functionality, the best service, and of course, the best price. So, this is one of many that are out there.
Are you, are you, are you of the mind that this is something that the city would benefit from?
Staff does believe that, in fact, our next step to better managing the caseload, if you will, or the workload, if you will, of just resident complaints, we've embraced the philosophy of embrace the complaint, and how that we're getting more and more, it actually allows us to have a management tool to be in place, so that we can ensure accountability for all of our complaint-related issues. So, it's something that I would encourage being allowed to continue to look into and come up with a solution that works best for staff.
Comment? The other agencies that I am working with at the current time, they're all anticipating upgrading their systems because they get outdated really quickly in this day and age. They're also concerned about the response, as pointed out here, to the customer, the speed, the clarity, also being complete in the answers. What do we do now? Is the city contemplating our whole system upgrade, or just making amendments to it? And this or similar kind of system, would that be a part of the overall upgrade, or in addition to what we currently have?
It's our current view, given some of the things that we've looked at thus far, is that either it's going to be a software package that could be web-based, or something that's just a totally separate software package that can operate independently. I don't necessarily know that, at this point, it might be too early to tell that it's going to require system upgrades. I think we see it, or view it more as just an independent application.
I would like to say that I agree with Mr. Cox. I think that we have to look at the overall perspective of the software, and we also have to make a comparison. But technology does move quickly, and we should not be behind it, we should be ahead of it. So, I agree that we need to have a further study on the comparisons of different softwares that would improve customer service and the code enforcement. So, I'm in favor of having such a thing, because we do need it. Let us be progressive.
And I might add, as a part of that evaluation, one of the things that we'll look at is compatibility with existing software programs, to make sure that it ties in without bogging down or not communicating properly with the other software applications. So, it's something that staff does. That's part of our normal course of businesses, to look into these things and evaluate and decide what's best. And certainly, hearing the support of the council, if that is the support of the council, we'll continue down that path to bring back a management tool that helps us manage the complaint-related matters better.
So, the suggestion is then to continue looking into it? Okay, then I need a motion in a second for us to continue reviewing how to best handle this.
I would make a motion to add software packaging to, or something that operates independently for resident complaints to be revisited no later than 180 days from today's date. Which is
I want to second that, but I didn't hear the last 108 days, what?
To be no later than 180 days from today's date.
I don't see a problem with staff meeting that deadline. It should be possible. I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-14, general fund legal expenses. Recommendation, any action is at the discretion of the city council. Ms. Jones, do you want to, would you like to present this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to introduce the item. So, and again, I thank you, my colleagues, for allowing me to have this item on And again, I thank my colleagues for allowing me to have this item on the agenda. So during both the 2019-2020 budget workshop and our last meeting, I mentioned my surprise that our projected legal expenses hadn't reduced more considering major settlements in the past six months. In fact, the reduction was about 3%. That was what was projected. So it's with this in mind that the council, I believe, would benefit from a categorical breakdown of the general fund legal expenses for a period of up to the past 12 months to help us gain a better understanding of the basis for the 2019-2020 budget appropriation and to help us remain abreast of expected trends in spending. So with that said, Madam Mayor, I'll hand the item back to you when you invite a motion. I'm happy to make one for consideration.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Did you have something?
I would like to know, what is the intent of having such a list? Is there something that the city council can do regarding it or is this simply a question of information?
Information. It would be an informational piece.
Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes, so it was an item C-6 that was actually one of the questions. A few weeks ago, there was a retention fee for De Bornowski's law firm of $6,500. Today in item C-6, there is a $75,000 fee to his law firm.
We're on item D-14. Are you on D-6?
Yeah, this is legal fees.
No, we're on D-14, general fund legal expenses.
Yes, these are legal expenses.
Okay, we're on D-14. We can go back to, we cannot go back to D-6.
I can contextualize using D-6 and this is what I have. So the legal fees that you would see on item C-6 should have been addressed here. I don't know what the fee of $75,000 was, but every time I look at De Bornowski's law firm and another particular LLC or law firm, I tend to question the amounts. And I haven't had the opportunity because in this three-minute session, whenever I provide documentation, it doesn't get responded to me as to what these fees were for. And so this is a perfect way of establishing, not only do we have the details, but if we, like Mrs. Jones is establishing, provide like an itemized way or a small paragraph of what these expenses are going through or to, that would really alleviate the amount of exuberance of these fees that are for what and their legal fees. I don't understand them, but they are very nerve-wracking and I'm very bothered and frustrated by seeing these fees continuously.
So, Madam Mayor, may I? All right, so my intent on this agenda item isn't to get into the minutia, it's to provide general categorical information just so that I can get a feel, presuming that this would benefit the rest of the council as well, a general feel for what a city's legal expenses can be expected to look like. And I would draw those conclusions based on what we've seen in the course of up to the past 12 months. So I'm not looking for details such as invoices or written documentation on every expense. I just am looking for general, just to unpack this back a level instead of just giving one figure as to what the legal expenses were in the past fiscal year and what's projected in 2019, 2020. Just a category breakdown as to where our expenses predominantly lie. I'm happy to make a motion if you, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cox.
Well, I do have, thank you very much. If you look, if one looks at the budget, you find legal expenses all through the budget for different reasons and different items and the airport authority and the water and sanitary, general fund is a very small area and very restricted. So the impact of the general fund legal expenses would be minimal and probably covered in one paragraph. Is that really what you're looking for?
General fund, right. And just by category. So for example, fiscal year 18, 19, and the revised budget numbers, it came to 727,100. The projection for this fiscal year is 704,333,000, a reduction of 3%. So I'm just looking generally at, and I'm not going to target the 727 per se because for me, it would be the discretion of city staff as to how far back up to 12 months they want to go. But what generally lies in a figure such as that $727,000?
Second question. Often the city attorney submits a bill because he retains other individuals, they aren't for his firm, but they're for separate firms. Want just the one billing from his firm or for all legal expenses that go through his firm?
Just anything that would be posted as a legal expense. To the general fund.
Did we have a motion? There was a motion.
Motion? Did we have a second?
I don't have a second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D-15, cancellation of the July 2nd, 2019 and September 2nd, 2019 regular city council meetings. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council cancel the July 2nd, 2019 city council meeting and consider cancellation of the September 2nd, 2019 city council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions by council members?
I would like to know why. July the 2nd is not July the 4th. If it was the 4th, I could see us not attending. But business is business and I don't understand why we would cancel July the 2nd. I would like to have a reason for it.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, currently, in our view of the workload and the items in front of us, we don't necessarily foresee items being required for that July 2nd meeting. Certainly, the items, if there are items that pop up, we believe they can be pushed back to July 16th. I think largely it's in response to just the holiday being in the middle of the week, combined with the fact that we do have a lot of employees taking annual leave to extend the work, I'm sorry, to extend the vacation week. So with that, combined with the fact that we believe the workload is light for that agenda, combined with the fact that we believe human resources are also going to be light during that week to enjoy the holiday break, is why the recommendation came forward the way it did. As far as Labor Day, we're just suggesting that you consider it this time because certainly that's a council meeting that is immediately following a day off of a long weekend. So coming back from a holiday weekend, long one especially sometimes, certainly it's been in the past experience, a little bit more difficult to get everybody ready for that Tuesday meeting.
Therefore, I take it Labor is on a Monday?
So in anticipation of the discussion, I would anticipate making a motion to push the July 2nd and September 2nd to the following Tuesday, which would be July 9th and September 10th respectively. I would also encourage and make the motion to reconsider a cancellation of the two meetings to be set forth at the same months to be rescheduled.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
We do have a motion on the original July 2nd and September 2nd, we don't have yet. I make a motion that we actually do cancel the two meetings, July 2nd and September 2nd.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, I know that through municipal code, each council member here has a paycheck that they receive. So I want to make sure that administration, when the two cancellation dates are established, that you deduct those payments so that nobody here has a penalty, that those penalties have been for seeing when staff fails to deduct because we are on a specific hour and we get 26 checks. I mean, that's my understanding for other cities and that's what happens. So if that's not how the city operates, it's probably a technicality in another city and they got in trouble for it. So just, I just want to throw that out there.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and just...
Before you answer that, if we're on an hourly wage, then we're violating the law.
I'm at half a cent an hour.
What am I getting, a dollar twenty-six? Twenty-six, that's an hour?
Half a cent.
This is stupid.
Madam Mayor...
It's monthly stipend, period.
Oh, geez.
Councilmember...
Sorry, but...
No, she doesn't, Jim, she doesn't.
Councilmember Cox stated, one of the points that I was going to make is as it relates to council member compensation, it is in the form of a monthly stipend, not affixed to number of meetings. We might do it differently for the planning commission, I could be wrong about that, but I believe the planning commission is on a meeting basis, but in the case of the city council, it's on a monthly basis, not affixed to the number of meetings. So for example, just in the opposite of what we're doing now, if for example, there's a need for special meetings or additional meetings during the course of any month because the workload increases, that does not change the compensation of the council.
A dollar twenty-five an hour, right?
It's about that, yes.
That may be funny, but I have constituency here that would like to continue the way they have, twice a month. And I think it takes away from the laughter and the humor that we create about a dollar twenty-seven. Because if we think about it, we don't work by the hour, we're either there 24/7, five hours. It behooves, so I think making this a mockery, you know, we continue to mock our residents here as what our discussions are. And if you continue to look out in the audience, you would see that. And if you have public comment, you'll probably end up hearing something of that nature.
So, Madam Mayor, I do have a comment if I could. So laughter aside, and I certainly wasn't mocking my neighbors, but Councilmember Gomez does have a legitimate question because I know, having served on a governing board in a school district, there was a monthly stipend, yet education code required that the value of each meeting became prorated dependent upon how many meetings were actually held. So it's a legitimate question. I just didn't know if that same rule would apply to the cities, but it sounds like it doesn't.
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no and Councilmember Cox voting no.
Okay, now we move on.
I want to clarify that if I can. We know that July the 4th is around the corner, I think we can dispense of the meeting, but September's too far away, we don't know what business is going to be. We're going to have meetings in the meantime, we could wait, we could wait a meeting or two to take the action. I just think it's early to take the action. So if it was broken, my vote would be yes on July 4th and no on September 2nd. But that wasn't the way the motion was, I just wanted to clarify it, thank you.
Can I move on to public comments now? So we move on to public comments. And public comments are three minutes. The first one that I have, the first card that I have is Freddie Rosales. You're blocking the view. Ms. Gomez, you're blocking the view. Gomez, you're blocking the view. He doesn't hear. City Attorney, she's blocking her view.
I don't see the way the camera's position right now is creating a blocking of anybody's view right now, I can see them, so.
Okay.
Okay, ready?
Sorry, Freddie.
That's okay. Good evening, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Pro Tim Ramirez, council and staff. I am here to address the issue of illegal food vendors here in Victorville. As a family, we own and operate a restaurant here in Victorville. We've been in operation since June 5th, 1981, and we hope to be here many more years in Victorville. This past Saturday, June 15th, I witnessed two illegal food operations in progress. One was on the northeast corner of Mojave and Elavado, which took place on a property that is being sold by the Bradco Company. I informed Joe Brady and needless to say, he was not happy about this. The other was operating from a home on Street Kowenga and Palmdale Road, and it was taking place in the residence, of course, in the garage. I took the liberty to ask both parties if they had proper permits to operate such as city license, health and state board permits, et cetera. They both replied no. Not only this is illegal, but against the law on all local, state, and federal levels because I'm sure no taxes or fees are being collected. This practice must stop. I want to thank you, Keith Metzler, for your quick response to both Joe Brady and myself regarding this issue and to know that you are aware of this matter and you're being proactive already along with staff, per our conversation. I hope you as a council will be in full agreement to support staff in limiting this practice of illegal food vendors in Victorville. And thank you for your time, council.
Thank you so much, Freddie. Maggie Martin? After Maggie, Roger Lapointe.
I'm going to get right to it. I don't appreciate Ms. Gomez or anyone else on this council referring to Councilmember Jones or Ms. Jones as Jones, as I've heard her do this evening, or in previous times, numerous times, referring to a council member as Cox. They're council members. Each and every one of you owes that respect to one another. Last night, I wasn't at the June 4th meeting, last night I was up till 1:00 a.m. reviewing the last meeting. And I know that some people think this is trivial, but I'm really frustrated by alleged educated people who don't have command of the basics of the language. And one of them, I heard Ms. Gomez say over and over again, was library. It's library, Ms. Gomez, I'll spell it for you, L-I-B-R-A-R-Y, library. So, okay, so one of the things that I liked about public comments from the fourth meeting, I really loved Mr. Harriman's comment about Ms. Gomez asking multiple questions at the same time. He was a lot more gracious than me, saying on occasion, it's every time. It's every time. It's almost like she's afraid if she doesn't cram it all in there, she's not going to get her spot in the sun or whatever it is. That's just absolutely ridiculous to talk, to treat people that way. And these aren't necessarily in order. Her council member comments, she was speaking in Spanish and she said, well, she has another language. That's right, she does have another language, her second language, that's English. There you go on that one, because it is not English. Okay, so I want to remind the members of the council that are still here from when Ms. Gomez started, that would be Mr. Cox and the mayor, that I warned you from the beginning, big red flag when anyone gets up there on day one and says, I know, I heard there was going to be pushback, big, big red flag for me. And what did you guys say, previous council? Well, we'll give her time and we'll try to work with you. Well, that didn't work out well, did it? And it's not getting any better. It's just progressively getting worse. It's just progressively getting worse. Also, another thing that occurred last night was she, I'm sorry, June 4th meeting, she, after her, after Charlene Robinson called your ti- 30 seconds, she continued on, not just to complete a sentence, but several sentences after, because don't you know the universe revolves around her and we're just riveted to our seats-
Your time is up.
-to see or complete her comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Roger.
My name's Roger LaPlante. Good evening and thank you, Honorable Madam Mayor, Town Council, or City Council. Really appreciate the First Amendment right of freedom of speech. I have a couple of, uh, things I want to make comments on. And first and foremost, I want to honor the 75th anniversary of D-Day, 1944, with 10 seconds of silence, if we could. And that was all that died for our freedoms. I want to invite everybody to the High Desert Veterans, uh, City of Victorville Veterans Flight, Honor Flight Program. Uh, we're having a, a workshop on Thursday, this coming Thursday, at 6, 6 p.m. in the City Hall. And basically, the flight honors, the Honor Flight provides round trip, all expense paid, tour to Washington DC for military veterans as a way to honor their service to this country. The Honor Flight Network has made possible over 150,000 veterans to visit our country's war memorials. And I think that's a very, very good program, and I appreciate the City of Victorville sponsoring that. Very nice. And I'd also like to invite city leadership. We have a homelessness task force meeting tomorrow at 4 p.m. And I would like to see all the, all the, the mayor and the council people there, so you can see what the task force is all about, what we're trying to work on. I think that's another goo- good program, and I appreciate you guys forwarding that and allowing, uh, residents of the City of Victorville to participate in that. So we can, we can help get these veterans and everybody else off the streets. Also, uh, tomorrow morning at 9:30 over at the Superior Courthouse, Field Team Six will be sponsoring a voter registration drive, and I invite every, all, all the citizens to come out and help us register voters in honor of our, our constitutional right to vote. And 2020 can't come soon enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for all that information, we appreciate it. Uh, Ramiro Rodriguez.
I didn't come up here and, and, uh, put my card up for the D-14 with the general fund expenses, just to see what was gonna happen. I expected this long list of, like, the vendors and the 126 or 46 pages for the, for the little kids funding over there and the fire department transition. Nothing. And nothing was spoken up here either. Nothing was asked, nothing was decided. Me as a taxpaying citizen and the rest of us, we'd like to know exactly where all the money is going, how it's being used, how it's being spent. Not just, hey, we just give it to them and that's it, and, and that's it, next. Uh, everything's already agreed upon, nobody really, nobody really questions anything. But the thing is, we have somebody questioning a lot of things. I, I don't stand up and talk because the questions are asked. I don't come here just to sit in the chair and, and look at some faces. I come here to learn. I came here to ask questions. And I've been sitting there for a little bit over three years, almost four years now. And every time I listen, I learn. And I have the, maybe the, the valor to come up here and ask questions and maybe embarrass myself or anger you guys, or, 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 or something like that, but at least I get, I'm getting a response from, from somebody, and I'm learning a lot. I'm learning still right now that I haven't been answered the question to how the money was obtained for those $20 million that were used in the defense fund for the SEC lawsuit. I got, I went to Los Angeles and I got all the, all the papers and the lawsuits and I read them and, and disgusted me to see exactly what the settlement was. And it was a settlement, is what it was, and that says a lot. The city settled. Didn't clear up anything, it settled because they didn't want to go to jail, that's all. And I still kept asking those questions, I'm Joe taxpayer, or Ramiro taxpayer, however you want to call it. And disgusted of also, of when somebody asks a question, put that person aside, it could be Blanca, it could be Ms. Jones, it could be Ms. Ramirez, but the thing is, it has to be said, cause if not, then we're wasting our time. Why do we even vote? You guys just elect yourselves, spend all the money, what you need to do, and that's it. But, uh, there is, there is a little bit to be achieved in chaos. And thank you very much for giving me this time. And just to let you know, the Constitution of California written in 1849, it's almost over my time, in, in 1879 was written in Spanish and translated in English. That's the Constitution of California, written in Spanish and translated in English, not vice versa. Thank you.
Uh, Deanne Hudgens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Again, I wanted to address Councilmember Gomez to remind her of her responsibilities and duties as a councilmember and any elected representative. And anybody who truly desires to be ineffective, inefficient, or appear rational should know and understand that when elected, it's an honor to serve the entire community. Once again, it seems like that's a concept that Ms. Gomez doesn't respect. Public service is a public trust requiring officials to place loyalty to the citizens and ethical principles. Your demands on city staff is completely unreasonable. They are not your personal staff, nor should you require them to constantly provide you with additional information in my inbox. Being prepared for a meeting is the evidence of an effective councilmember. Also, your mantra regarding transparency is absurd. It is obviously another ploy to get attention. And your accusation of lack of transparency shows your desperation to appear in control, or possibly your inability to understand the issue. How many people help you prepare for a meeting? How many people and how much time do they take to prepare your scripted questions and comments? Are there people communicating with you via your Facebook Live and YouTube broadcast during meetings? More indications that you may be in over your head. No one has the power of retention to quote public statues and quotes from recollection or from memory. What is the purpose of having those detailed during a meeting? Seriously, do you really believe anyone knows, cares, or even gives a hoot about those citations? It is your attempt to, to appear knowledgeable and informed, in other words, wasting more time. Once again, I remind you that you were elected, not hired. Holding a city manager accountable is your duty in conjunction with the entire City Council. Hiring support staff is his or her responsibility to perform or to delegate as appropriate or as established in city policy. It is not within your purview to direct any member of the city staff. You, along with at least two councilmembers, are authorized to direct the city manager, however. When you decided to run for City Council, it seems you misunderstood the role. Serving the community is the expectation of your position, not the expectation you exhibit of being served. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that's, uh, there was the last card that I had. Uh, so at this time, uh, we move on to E2, uh, report from City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Um, I have a few items here. I, I first want to call attention to, uh, what occurred on Saturday, June 8th. Uh, we're very proud to have, uh, conducted, and I believe very successfully conducted, our first neighborhood pop-up event, and we conducted it at Brentwood Park, uh, in the Brentwood community of Victorville. And, um, th- there was an event that, um, certainly couldn't have been done without the help of all of the departments, uh, from the city taking their time out on a Saturday to, uh, put the event on. That doesn't include all of the months of planning to, to actually get the e- event organized, but it was an event that we, um, had where we invited those residents of the Brentwood community to come out. We actually, uh, sent out notices to those members, invited them to participate in a, uh, dog show, uh, stretcher mutt dog show, as, as we call it. Um, we called it a pop-up in the, in the park. We also had all of the city departments represented. We had, uh, tents there where the city departments hosted a variety of picnic-type games, uh, for those that attended. We, uh, uh, offered free hot dogs, popcorn, um, snow cones, uh, I'm sure there was something else in there. Um, but then we, uh, closed the evening with a movie in the park. And we estimated about 700 residents from that Brentwood, uh, community came out. Um, certainly after the event, we felt it was such a great success. We used it as a test measure to see if we wanted to do it again, and we certainly believe there's a demand from your residents to do, uh, those again. So we're planning another one, uh, for August, and we're just starting the, the planning stages for that event. Uh, we haven't chosen the park yet, but we'll likely do something similar, uh, and perhaps include, uh, live entertainment with a band, uh, of sort. And the goal there is really to start going into the communities, bringing the departments to the communities so that there's a direct connect, trying to establish more of a direct connection with the residents. So to the extent there are issues, we want to be the first to know about it so we can address them as soon as possible, and just establish a, a more personal relationship w- with our residents. So, uh, we'll keep you, uh, in tune as to, uh, when and where that next event will be. Uh, beyond that, uh, the Great Race is coming through Victorville, uh, in coming weeks, June 22nd, uh, between, uh, I'm sorry, coming weeks, good gosh, that's, uh, this weekend. Uh, between 12 and 3 p.m., they're gonna be taking a route from high, uh, I'm sorry, they're gonna be starting in Riverside, taking a route up to 15, uh, exiting at Mojave Drive and traversing eventually to get to the Route 66 Museum, uh, on D Street. It's a free event, uh, there's gonna be, uh, parking at the Transit Center, and they're expecting 120 vintage cars to be rolling through every minute. Uh, it's a, it's an event that actually drives through Victorville and eventually makes it up, I believe to Tacoma or Seattle. Tacoma, I'm sorry. Um, we have another event that's hosted, uh, here at the city, uh, it's Honor Flight Workshop. It's Thursday, June 20th, 6 p.m. All military veterans are invited to join us for Honor Flight Workshop. Uh, this would be an opportunity to, um, learn a little bit more about how veterans can be a part of an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC, to, to our country's war memorials. Um, we have our Fourth of July fireworks show coming up, that's an event that we sponsor as the city. Uh, it's an event that'll be, uh, held at, uh, as usual, the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds, starting at 9 p.m., admission to that. Um, and parking is free. Um, we also have a blood drive coming up, um, Wednesday, June 26th, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. Uh, we also have a Hogwarts preregistration Quiz now open for upcoming Harry Potter event. That's, uh, at the Victorville Library, they're always doing something fun and exciting over there on June 29th. Uh, and I have some development activities, I'm just glancing through to see if there's, uh, Cardenas. Uh, grand opening is tomorrow, 10 a.m. Um, they've actually already been open for a couple of days, go check them out if you can. Um, I've experienced Cardenas already, and, uh, they're pretty impressive in what they're offering. Um, I can keep going, uh, trying to see, just go with that, that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Uh, now we move on to E3. And this is, um, councilmembers discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming City Council agenda, and this is a three-minute, uh, time limit. Now, this is for, uh, agendizing, uh, for the upcoming, uh, meetings.
I have nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Uh, yes. I heard a statement here that the city settled a lawsuit because somebody didn't want to go to jail. There's not a single person here that was available or voted on the bond issue. So, uh, I think under 54954.2 subsection A, subsection 3, totally misleading false statements were made, and I'm requesting staff and the attorney under the Brown Act to place it on the next agenda and clarify these statements. We have a agreement we discussed, we are restricted about what can be discussed, not because of our request, but because of the SEC. But when you have someone saying, we made an agreement because we want to avoid jail, uh, it's either a terrible misinterpretation of the facts, or somebody's just flat lying and we have to tell the public the truth, I'd like to have this on the next agenda. 54954.2 subsection A, subsection 3, to clarify, to say it was made to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gomez, do you have anything?
Yes. To the lovely female speaker who came up to the podium, who wishes to have my ideologies to be aligned with hers. I didn't grow up in your era, and I didn't grow up in your culture. I'm gonna be my person and my identity and represent the people as I best see fit. It's a selfless act that I've committed and I'm engaged to. I would recommend that you, when you speak behind the podium, cite your sources, please. I like to have a look at them.
Is this to agendize something?
No, it's not, I'm sorry, I'm-
Yeah, we're on E2.
Okay, no, I don't have anything to agendize, thank you for correcting me in that.
Okay, so we're agendizing items. Did you have anything to agendize?
No.
Okay, then we move on to E4. You can go ahead and speak now.
So to the lovely female who is speaking, I'm sorry, I didn't grow up in your era. However, if you cite your sources, I'd be interested. And next time, instead of hiding behind the podium, I won't bite you. I can bring someone, you can bring someone, talk to me directly. Believe me, I will listen to your concerns as well, to you and anybody else's as I continue to do so. Quiero también darles de saber a la comunidad que tenemos un equipo velando por nuestros derechos, nuestros privilegios y nuestros bienes, bienes estar es como comunidad. Yo como su representante, Blanca Gomez, he estado en su vecindad, en su, en su vecindad, haciendo saber cómo la ciudad está para escuchar sus necesidades y sus quejas. I'm happy to communicate that there's a team of residents looking out for our community as a whole. Being out in the community has and continues to be very pleasant, as a matter of fact. Mendez versus Westminster was a catalyst to Brown versus Board of Education. Ramiro and I had the honor of meeting Sylvia Mendez and councilmembers from the City of Westminster. We acknowledged that the two-mile trail commemoration to the Mendez family is something that we will shortly see in the City of Victorville in the High Desert. I encourage everyone of you to search Mendez versus Westminster. This is what the High Desert will see in its near future. Gracias y buen día.
Sure, I just thought Brown, Brown versus Board of Education was, is a settled issue, anyway. Um, just very quickly, I attended the last SBCTA meeting. I, I, uh, sat in Councilmember Cox's stead and attended a special meeting of the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Um, just a, a, a side note as, um, regarding Mr. Messler's, um, reports, the, uh, race of, and all of the wonderful cars that are gonna be coming through Victorville, that, that organization actually contacted our very own Route 66 Museum to ask them to take the lead on this project. That's quite an honor for our city, and so I would certainly encourage everyone to be out there for this event. It's gonna be a huge, uh, media event across the state that they're actually coming through our city. So, um, be there, you'll see wonderful cars. I'm gonna be sitting, uh, in Florida, probably in the middle of a thunderstorm during that wonderful event, but, um, I, I expect that it's gonna be a, a wonderful time. Uh, and with regard to the comments made about, uh, Normandy, um, let me just echo those sentiments. Um, I wholeheartedly support them, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like to thank Mr. Valentin Godina for helping me regarding the library by taking those photographs for me. And we spent, uh, two, three hours trying to get the right pictures so that you could see the need of, uh, helping restoring the library. The other that I would like to say is- The other that I would like to say is Happy Fourth of July, since we won't be meeting. For me, as an educator of 38 years, the Declaration of Independence is life, liberty and the pursuit of all happiness. Let me say that as a proud American, it is a wonderful thing to be able to live in this country of freedom and know that people have died and suffered to give us what we have. We should all be proud that we live in this wonderful, beautiful country of ours. And God bless America. Thank you.
I do. On June 13, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Amethyst Basin Project. This project took 10 years in the making. It covers 27.4 acres. The nine million project is intended to regulate water flow when storms hit this area. This has been a cooperative effort between the San Bernardino County Flood Control District and the Mojave Water Agency, the City of Victorville and California Department of Water Resources. This project is designed to handle a one-year storm. A 100-year storm, correction there. The basin will capture peak storm flows and release them at manageable rate to protect property and road crossings downstream of the basin, including Interstate 15. The Amethyst Basin brings tremendous benefit to the community of Victorville through improved flood control, increased safety and the recharging of our groundwater supply, which ultimately increases our potential for future development. I want to thank the San Bernardino County Flood Control, the Mojave Water Agency, the Department of Water Resources and our City of Victorville for the inter-agency collaboration and investment of manpower and resources that made this capital improvement a reality. Really, this is a tremendous, tremendous, great project that was completed and it's amazing. I would recommend for anyone that would like to at least see it, just drive out there. And I think they can only go so far in, into the area. But anyhow, it's something that's really amazing and worthwhile seeing. And I think that covers everything. Nothing else before this council. This meeting is adjourned.